Okay, I call the public hearing on the proposed local law number two of 2021, allowed to update the town code with municipal code enforcement inspector on this day, February ninth, 2021. This is a Zoom conference call with YouTube livestream to the public. This is due to the COVID-19 emergency state and federal bans on large meetings or gatherings and pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive order 2020, uh, 202.1 issued on March 12th, 2020, suspending the open meetings law. Okay, there's no pledge to the flag because we're all over the place. So we'll do a quorum call for attendance. Supervisor Oberly here, Councilwoman Cunningham.
Yeah.
Councilman Giuliano.
Yeah.
Councilman Dean Michael.
Here.
Councilman Witten.
Here.
Town Clerk Mackin.
Here.
The town has a quorum so the meeting can begin. The town clerk will read the public hearing meeting notice, a hearing notice.
Please take notice that the town of Clinton will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February ninth, 2021 via Zoom video conference, consistent with executive orders 202.1 and 202.15 as extended, addressing the COVID-19 virus at 6:25 PM prevailing time or as soon thereafter as the matter is reached on the agenda concerning proposed local law number one, I'm sorry, X of 2021 entitled Amendment to Town Code Municipal Code Enforcement Inspector pursuant to Article 16 of the New York Town Law. Please take further notice due to public health concerns. In-person attendance will not be permitted. However, the public will be fully able to observe and participate in the public hearing via computer, smartphone, tablet, or other electronic device. The public is invited to attend the hearing held via Zoom video conference and comment on the proposed local law. Members of the public who wish to comment will be able to do so by joining the meeting via Zoom electronically or by telephone. The passcodes will be published by noon on February eighth, 2021, which will enable the public to participate in the meeting. The codes can also be retrieved by emailing Town Clerk Carol Mackin at townclerk@townofclinton.com on February eighth, 2021 until 3:00 PM on February ninth, 2021. Comments for the public hearing can be submitted in advance of the public hearing by sending an email to townclerk@townofclinton.com by 3:00 PM on February ninth, 2021. This local law will take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. Complete copies of the proposed local law are available at the Town of Clinton Clerk's office and on the Town of Clinton website for inspection during regular business hours. At this time, all interested persons and citizens shall have the opportunity to be heard on the said proposal.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment so people understand what this is. This is strictly an administrative type zoning law which redefines definition. Currently, the only definition to enforce the law is the zoning administrator. We have appointed the new person in that function with a title of Municipal Code Enforcement Inspector. So we had to put a change in the definitions to allow that to also be a condition of someone who can enforce the law rather than going through and changing all the words and try to find them all over the place. We did it this way. So that's all it is. Now we open up for comments. Anybody have any comments? Friends, anybody else popping into the meeting that you see other than the faces I see on the screen?
No, no one's in the waiting room, just Jeff and Elliot, who are already, they're already in the meeting. I thought they would.
No, I just was looking for the last person sort of running up the steps to come into the meeting room. Okay, well, there being no further comments, I make a motion that the close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call Oberly, I Cunningham.
Hi.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. I make a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Is there a second?
Dean Michael, second.
Roll call Oberly, I Cunningham.
Hi.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Public hearing is completed and done. We'll start soon as you get a piece of paper off the copier with the regular board meeting.
Is this intermission? We should get our popcorn and soda.
I want to apologize, I didn't realize my mic was open earlier when I was trying to coordinate the child. And then I turned around, I'm like, oh, they all heard that, okay.
It's all good.
Okay, start the next meeting. I call the regular town board meeting on February ninth, 2021 via teleconference and using Zoom with a YouTube livestream to the public. This is due to the COVID-19 emergencies. I gotta change glasses. To the COVID-19 emergency state and federal bans on large meetings or gatherings and pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive order 202.1 issued on March 12th, 2020, suspending the open meetings law. Members can view the meeting as it is livestreamed on the town board video page on the Town of Clinton website. No public participation at this meeting. No pledge, no flag. Okay, to establish a quorum. Supervisor Oberly here, Councilman Giuliano.
Here.
Councilman Witten.
Here.
Councilman Michael.
Here.
Councilwoman Cunningham.
Yeah.
Town Clerk Mackin.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum so we can conduct the business. Approve minutes, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 12th, 2021 town board meeting. Is there a second?
Dean Michael, second.
Any discussion? Roll call Oberly, I Cunningham.
Hi.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, the next thing, the supervisor's comments. Just want to remind the people that the town offices, highway department, justice court office, and court will be closed for the president's holiday on Monday, 15th, February 15th. The Clinton Community Library will be open on the same day. The recycling center will be open as usual from 7:30 AM to noon on Saturday, February 13th. The COVID-19 vaccination situation is providing only 600 doses per week for the people who are allowed to receive them in Dutchess County. So we're really constrained. The allowed people to receive the vaccination is very large, so the demand to get appointments and vaccination is very frustrating. At this time, you'll need to make a return trip to the same center to get the second vaccination. It is expected that it will take into the summer for all who want a vaccination to obtain their vaccination. In all cases, you'll be have to have a prior appointment to get a vaccination. There are three general places to get vaccinations. New York State-run centers, Dutchess County centers, and soon pharmacies. Each has a different way to obtain an appointment. To get a New York State appointment, you must phone their hotline, 1-833-697-4829, which is open seven days a week from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And their closest centers are either at SUNY Albany or the Westchester County Center. For the Dutchess County appointments, you must sign up at www.dutchessny.gov/covid, C-O-V-I-D, vaccine, V-A-C-C-I-N-E, to get alerts on your computer when the appointments are available and more information who is allowed to get a vaccination. When the alert comes on your computer, you must very quickly click on the button to get an appointment. Within a minute or sooner of the alert, all appointments are gone for the week. The county centers are located at the old J.C. Petty Store in Galleria on Route Nine in Wapagers and at Dover, with a new location being set up. For pharmacy vaccinations at CVS, Rite Aid, and Walgreen, they are still setting up how appointments and locations will be available. Contact your pharmacy's webpage for CVS and Walgreen at this time to get the details to get an appointment and at which location will vaccinations be given, be available. So then in the, yeah, that's all I have under supervisor's comments.
So Ray, how new is the information that you just read? Because the county just sent out at 4:30 an update where they're asking everybody to go to that email or that web address, which is dutchessny.gov/covidvaccine. And they want you to fill out a new form, which is going to replace that notification that you just, you just mentioned. But then also, if you don't have internet access, they want you to call 845-486-3555 and, and you can put your information in that way.
Okay, that, that information I did not see on the computer because I was writing what this was right here.
Yeah, it only came out at like three, at 4:30 this afternoon, so.
That's when I was writing this stuff, so it came out. So I'll update this to include that information so that the people can see it on our minutes and webpage.
One other thing about the vaccines that we should mention, it applies to a smaller group of people, but if you are a member of the Veterans Administration, call the VA. That's, you know, my parents couldn't get, get it through Dutchess County, but my father was able to get a vaccine through the VA almost immediately.
Right.
He had to drive down to Council Point, but he got it.
There, there was a complication on the VA one because I went to their website, I'm a veteran and all that. You have to have a family doctor in the VA system. If you don't have a family doctor in the VA system, you don't get it right now. Now, they may change it next month or something, but currently that's what the webpage says. You can, you must be able to.
Okay.
So glad he made it.
Yeah.
Okay. Power line, quick statement on that. The town will approve an agreement with Transco on the repair of damaged roads when the equipment will need to cross the roads. Currently, they are starting construction at the northern end. Thanks, Coach.
He's hitting the spacebar and muting himself. Ray, you're muting yourself when you touch the spacebar.
It does. What, okay, I'll start at the beginning. The town will approve an agreement with Transco on the repair of damaged town roads when their equipment will need to cross the roads. Currently, they are starting construction at the northern end of the transmission line. Transco gave their presentation on December 3rd over Zoom to the community. Much more information on the project is available on their webpage, www.ny-yes.com. Actual construction in Clinton will begin in 2022 with the Electrical Transmission Service beginning by December 2023. Additional Transco presentations will be scheduled in 2021 as more information becomes available.
Yeah, I ended up getting, I think, three or four emails. I don't know why they emailed me just alone, but the, it must have been one of the labor unions that's going to be doing the work and, and they were basically soliciting people within the labor union to email the local, you know, towns to request that we approve that.
You mean the road agreement?
The road agreement, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to approve it, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, I know, but I, I got like three or four from different people that lived throughout the county. Only one was actually from the town, but it was really initiated by the labor union.
Somehow I hit a button here.
Hmm. We can all still see and hear you.
Yeah.
They probably minimized the Zoom window. Go look on the bottom, Ray, for the Zoom icon and click it again and see if it pops it back.
There we are, we're back. Okay, at this time, tax collector Kathy McMahon will describe the operation of her office with respect to the COVID and her relocation and the Dropbox. Nancy, I mean Kathy.
Good evening, everybody. Since town offices are closed to the public, I would like to take this opportunity to present options for paying your taxes remotely. You can pay by mail. Mail your payment to tax collector, Town of Clinton, 1215 Center Road, Reinbeck 12572. For 2021, payments must be postmarked by March 1st to avoid penalty. Include your entire bill to receive a receipt by mail. And please make your checks payable to tax collector, Town of Clinton. Your second option for making a payment is the online payment portal. Pay your taxes online using the online payment portal. You can access the portal from townofclinton.com, go to departments, then click on tax collector. The following fees do apply to online payments. You can use an e-check, which is an automatic withdrawal from your bank account, and that fee is $1.75. If you choose to use a debit card, the fee is $3.95. And for credit card payments, it's 2.45% of the total tax due. Our newest option for payment is the payment Dropbox. I asked the town to install a secure payment Dropbox, which is located on the front of the schoolhouse building at the town hall campus. Look for the green sign above the slot where you can drop your payments. Payments placed in the Dropbox come right into the building, so it's completely safe, and receipts are mailed the day I process your payment. The Dropbox is available 24/7 through March 1st. After that, please make your payments online or by mail because at that time we'll be in the penalty period. The fourth option is paying in person, and that is by appointment only. If you choose to do this, please call 845-266-5721, extension 141, or email taxcollector@townofclinton.com to make an appointment. Appointments are limited, and it really needs to be that you absolutely have to make the payment by appointment. For the safety and health of everyone, please use the remote payment options whenever possible. And please remember, payments made in person must be by check or cash for exact amount only. And just to go over the penalties, payments must be received or postmarked by March 1st, 2021 to avoid penalties. Payments made March 2nd through March 31st will incur a 2% penalty. Payments made April 1st through April 30th will incur a 3% penalty. And payments made May 1st through June 1st will incur a 4% penalty plus a $2 rebilling fee. Any payments after June 1st must be made to the Dutchess County Commissioner of Finance. I cannot accept payments after June 1st. Please call 845-486-2025 to make arrangements to pay the Commissioner of Finance. I'd also like to mention that I receive a lot of return mail, so please try to keep your mailing address up to date with us. If you have a mailing address change, you can contact the town assessor by mail at 1215 Center Road, Reinbeck 12572, or email theassessor@townofclinton.com. And also, just so you know, I have moved my office, I'm now in the schoolhouse building. And that's all I have.
I just want to make a comment that we'll post this information on the webpage just so you didn't have to write it all down.
It's already there, Ray.
Oh, is it?
It's there, yep.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, next item then is Old Business of Agricultural Events Law. Take it away. Dean, you there?
We lost him.
He seems frozen.
Yeah.
Where did he go? Oh, he's over there.
Give him a minute.
Yeah.
Give him a minute.
You can't lose him now. It's so long to get here.
He left so he could rejoin.
I wonder how long he was frozen before we noticed.
Could have been a while.
He's not, not even on anything.
Let me, I'll text him.
Did you get him?
I texted him, he didn't get back to me.
Electronics is great as long as it's working. Ray, is Dean linked up to us at all?
No, he's not in the waiting room.
Okay, so he lost the total connection.
Yep.
We can skip that one and come back when he returns.
Does somebody else want to, want to take it? I mean, you've all been involved in.
I mean, I can read it, it's not a problem. I just wanted him the opportunity. Okay, just to keep the agenda moving, I make a motion to approve the following regulation, be it resolved that the town board approves resolution number 11 of 2021, adopting local law number one of 2021 entitled Agricultural Events Law, a copy of which is attached here too and made a part of this resolution, and that the town clerk be directed to enter this local law in the minutes of the meeting and give due notice of the adoption to the Secretary of the State of New York. Is there a second?
Giuliano, second.
Any further discussion? I think it's been pretty much talked all.
I just want to be confirm, it was resolution number 13 and you said 11.
Oh.
Just want to clarify.
Okay, that's it. Okay, roll call Oberly, I Cunningham.
Hi.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Michael, absent. Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next one. This, this is the motion that I talked about earlier where we're just changing a definition to include the municipal code enforcement inspector as one of the enforcers of the zoning law. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves resolution number 14 of 2021, adopting local law number two of 2021 entitled Amendment to Town Code Municipal Code Enforcement Inspector, a copy of which is attached here too and made a part of this resolution, and that the town clerk be directed to enter this local law in the minutes of this meeting and give due notice of the adoption to the Secretary of State. Is there a second?
Giuliano, second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call vote Oberly, I Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Michael, absent. Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I just want to say, nothing to do with this, Dean sent me a text, somehow his computer got shut down, it shut down on him, so he's trying to re-log back in, so he hopefully will be back here shortly.
The next one is sort of a repeat of an earlier resolution we made with some wordsmithing required by the assessor. So we're rescinding the earlier one and adopting the newer one. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves resolution number 15 of 2021 to extend the 2021 assessment role to renewal of exemptions received in 2020 for eligible persons aged 65 and older and eligible persons with disabilities and limited income dispensing with the need for renewal application from such qualified persons and rescinding town board resolution number 57 of 2020. Is there a second?
Giuliano, second.
Further discussion? Okay, roll call Oberly, I Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Michael, absent. Witten.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is the fund balance policy. Witten, be my guest.
So the fund balance policy was something we were discussing before COVID. And then COVID paused everything. I have changed, I don't know how many months it's been, but I, I haven't changed anything in it.
Almost a year.
Yeah, it's almost a year now, but nothing has changed in the policy with Shane, so I just wanted to reintroduce it so that we can finally get a vote on it maybe next month. So I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves resolution number 16 of 2021, introducing proposed local law number of 2021 titled Fund Balance Policy, and setting a public hearing on March 9th, 2021 at 6:25 PM via Zoom, at which time the public can be heard concerning the proposed local law.
Is there a second?
Giuliano, second.
Okay, discussion, I have a discussion, as you probably expect. I went through and, whoops, I forgot to roll. These pages all look alike. Just have it. The, there's, the two issues are the same two issues I discussed previously when we were talking about it. One issue is, it says, and this being a policy which says you can't waiver from it, any amount above the threshold that you've incorporated into the law must be put basically in capital projects. This will not allow us to balance the taxes and help the public.
It says, it says, any surplus funds that exceed 45% of adopted budget appropriations, the excess may be utilized for any lawful purpose approved by the. the excess may be utilized for any lawful purpose approved by the town board. And then there's a guidance that says it should not be appropriated, it should be appropriated to fund one-time expenditures, so, which do not result in recurring operating costs.
Yeah, no, that I know.
That's D4.
I was reading. Then. Yeah, I do that. And the, uh, D4. In order to maximize long-term effect of such use, the excess should be appropriated to fund one-time expenditures which do not result in recurring operating costs and are be used to establish or increase reserves. That's just the thing that I was saying, says that we got to put it into.
Well, it says that it can be used for things that are one-time costs, or it can be used to establish or increase reserves. It doesn't, it doesn't say a must.
Not operating funds.
What, I know, but it doesn't say you must use it in reserves. It's an end or.
Yeah, well, either case, it's to fund one-time expenditures do not result in recurring operating costs.
Yeah, so like, we shouldn't use the fund balance to give somebody a pay increase because that would be recurring. Like, it would be, you know, if we had a project like solar panels, we could use it for that, or.
I understand that. My concern is, we will not be able to necessarily always stay under tax cap if we abide by this because this is a policy and it's not readily changed unless we go through a, a process to change those numbers. That's all I'm saying.
I mean, the, I, it's a pretty high ceiling at 45%, and if, if you think it should be higher.
I know what the number is. I don't know mathematically how it all comes out, so that's.
Well, didn't we, we said, I mean, it's been a long time since we've talked about this, but we came up with numbers and, and this wall fell within the, the numbers that we were working with the budget back then, but I.
It's somewhat complicated because you got to take out all the fringe benefits.
Yeah.
You got to find them all over the place, and, and there are a big variety of them, which reduces the, um, amount of money that you will have in the surplus fund. Because you're taking away revenue, and not revenues, but expenses that you typically would have included in it. So, I mean, that's my thought on it. I think it's going to make it difficult to hold the taxes under the 2% number, whatever that is, whenever it is, each year changes. And, um, it's a a complicated process to count the monies. So, that, I just think it's confusing in that respect.
Well, explain why that would affect the tax cap. Sorry, I'm just late joining the party here, but.
Well, traditionally, in all prior years, we have taken unexpendited balanced monies and utilized them into the operating budgets of general and highway funds. You can't do that now.
So you're saying that we would have to raise the.
You'd have to increase taxes to balance the budget.
Categories.
But wouldn't that be, if we did that, say, put them, I'm trying to find the wording now. Wouldn't that be appropriating the funds for one-time expenditures?
No. One-time expenditures is like paying money to plant a tree, for example. You do it once. Operating expenses are insurance, uh, heat, electricity, whatever.
So if D4 said, in the event, uh, where is it, uh, the excess may be utilized for any lawful purpose approved by the town board.
That's what we do when we do the.
So if, 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 if we, if we cut off D4 at that sentence and did not have the thing about one-time expenditures or to increase or establish reserves.
Yeah.
You'd be fine. All right. So what if we did say that, I mean, I, I, I think that sentence was there just as like a guidance, um, but if we take out the one-time expenditures, but, but like, have, if I have something that says it can be used to establish or increase reserves, just so someone reading it later understands that that's something that can happen. It doesn't say it must.
Well, okay, yeah. What was your wording now?
Well, if in order to minimize the, the excess where, so I could say, in order to minimize the long-term effect of such use, these funds can be used, excess funds can be used to establish or increase reserves. You know, and that's after the sentence that says any lawful purpose approved by the town board. So we would just take out the one-time expenditures.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go on that.
I would say in the future, though, I would not really want to use fund balance to pay for ongoing expenses, but I understand your point. I understand your point.
We approve the budget, so we are in, it's something we have to do. And if we don't want to put the money in the budget, we don't put it in the budget.
Yeah, I think that, I think the, the, the spirit behind that sentence was that, you know, if we were gonna, well, say we have Granicus coming up now, we shouldn't be saying Granicus is going to be $5,000 a year. I know we're not paying for it. I'm just using the example.
Yeah, sure.
Five thousand a year, we shouldn't be saying the fund balance is going to pay for that, you know? But I understand your point, and so I'll, I'll change it and, and for next month's, uh, vote.
Okay, I'm happy with that then.
Okay.
It's, you know, I just didn't want to get us into a box where.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't just, uh, although we got to resubmit it here to, to vote on it then at that point.
No, I, I, we can schedule the public hearing, which is what this motion is.
Yeah.
And, uh, I'll have a new version for Carol in a week or so that can be on the web.
The public hearing version, that's all.
Yeah.
A big deal.
We'll make that one available after I receive it.
Yeah. Okay.
Very good.
Okay, so everybody else happy? No questions? Roll call. Overly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Whitton.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now we do the Granicus.
So with, uh, the short-term rental law passing, um, the county has, they used to call it host compliance. Host compliance is now a company called Granicus, and they provide software so that, um, municipalities can basically enforce their short-term rental laws. It identifies properties for them, and then uh, in conjunction with whatever software the town uses to track whether properties are permitted correctly or not, the, the software will constantly check your software against their, against their data to see if all of the properties in your town are properly permitted. So the county collects, uh, what do they call it? The, uh, occupancy tax on Airbnb. And the occupancy tax is not shared with the towns, and some towns didn't like that, so the county has said, well, they'll provide Granicus uh, for free to the towns. They'll pay for it to help us enforce these laws. Uh, and it's not a small fee. It's about, it's about $5,000. Um, so we had the contract. John Fenton worked with the county and we got a contract from Granicus. I've been trying to work with, uh, the Department of Finance to get a memorandum of agreement to pay for Granicus, but we haven't gotten it as of today. They promised me this week. So I'm gonna make the motion to approve signing the contract with the stipulation that we receive an MOA from Dutchess County for payment. So I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves the contract labeled Q-107858 between Granicus and the Town of Clinton for short-term rental compliance monitoring as detailed in the contract for a period of one year commencing on February 9th, 2021, at an annual cost of $4,464, paid for by Dutchess County and authorizes and powers and directs the supervisor to sign the contract with the stipulation that we receive an MOA from Dutchess County for payment.
Giuliano, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call, vote. Overly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Whitton.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, I'm busy. I got a lot in a row here. Um, the next one is different. We had had some emails on this. And now the situation on the ground has changed a little bit. I noticed a, a while back and, and mentioned to you guys that the scroller on channel 22 doesn't have the most up-to-date information all the time, and we were trying to figure out ways to alleviate that problem so we could have the up-to-date information. And it turns out now that the software or the, the hardware that we use, the hardware that we use to change the scroller is no longer supported by the company that made it. And so Jerry is now, um, working to solve that problem and figuring out how he can update the scroller uh, and, and work around this problem that the, that, that it's not supported anymore. Jerry has said that once that does happen, he is willing to train Samantha, who has already been working on video issues, on video things with him. He's going to train Samantha on how to make the scroller changes, and conveniently, since Samantha also works with Carol Mackin and Ray Overly, they will be able to provide her with up-to-date information that should be on the scroller, and then she can make the changes. So we don't really have anything to vote on tonight. I just wanted to, I knew we had had emails about it, so I just want to say that that's what we're going to be doing moving forward. Jerry's on board and Samantha's on board and Ray and, and Carol, so, uh, I think that's it with that, if there are any questions.
Okay, thanks a lot. Uh, next is a planning board vacancy. Dean?
So we have, uh, someone that's been on the planning board for, for many, many years, um, for as long as I know. So, uh, um, she's basically come to the, to the point where she wants to do other things with her, her, uh, Tuesday nights, and, uh, I don't blame her after, uh, it has to be at least 15 plus years, so. So, um, thank you to, uh, Teresa for, uh, having dedicated so much time to, to doing that. But with that, um, I'd like to open up that there's a vacancy on the planning board, and that if someone is interested, they should send in their resume to the supervisor. Um, and then as a, a point of, and I mixed up my papers here, so I'm trying to find exactly the, uh, motion here, but, uh, uh, but I had looked up on the calendar, uh, Wednesday the 24th. It didn't have anything scheduled, and I think we should do that in person. I think we could do it socially distancing and, uh, I, 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 I would prefer to do it that way if anybody, nobody has an objection to that. What's everybody else's thoughts on that?
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, the only thing I would comment is, uh, we should say, like, the evening of Wednesday or something, just so there's general time. I'm not saying 7:30 or whatever, but it's not during the middle of the morning.
It'll, it'll be after five on, on Wednesday the 24th.
Just some way of defining it.
Sure.
People would be able to attend that time. Okay.
So with that, I'll make a motion, be it resolved that the town board holds a special meeting, executive session live in the town hall on Wednesday the 24th of 2021, with the approval, uh, for the purpose of an interview, uh, of candidates for the appointment of, uh, to the planning board.
Is there a second?
Giuliano, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call. Overly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Whitton.
Aye.
Motion carried.
So I, I, just to clarify, I, I said Teresa, that she, she used to be on the planning board. Uh, it's Tracy Rizika, so, uh, thank you to Tracy for her long dedication to the town.
Okay, thank you. Next is, uh, Transco Use and Crossing Agreement. I briefly spoke to that earlier. Uh, we'd been working for the last two months with Transco, trying to get our town properly indemnified so that if any damages occur, that, uh, Transco will fix them at not town expense, but at their expense. And a lot of legalese going back and forth and wordsmithing, so we finally got a final document. I make a motion to approve the res, following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves the road use and crossing agreement between Transco and the Town of Clinton effective February 9th, 2021, and authorizes, empowers, and directs the supervisor to sign the contract. Is there a second?
Dean Michael, second.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? Roll call, vote. Overly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Whitton.
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, somehow we missed, uh, doing it earlier, approve of the dog control services with SPCA for 2021, so this is to just approve the contract that we had last year. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves Dog Control Services Agreement with Dutchess County SPCA from January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021, and that the town supervisor hereby is authorized, empowered, and directed to execute the contract. Is there a second?
Dean Michael, second.
Further discussion? Roll call. Overly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Whitton.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. This is to approve the dog control housing agreement with the SPCA. There are two different documents. This essentially has a fee schedule that, uh, if you lose your dog and they catch him, you got to pay so much per day and all that sort of stuff. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves Dog Control Housing Agreement with Dutchess County SPCA from January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021, and that the town supervisor is hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to execute the contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Okay, roll call. Overly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Uh, Michael.
Aye.
Whitton.
Aye.
Okay, uh, motion carried.
And just to clarify a point, just so it's not confusing, is if they catch the dog, they will make an effort to call the owner, so if you have proper tags on it, it's not like they're going to house him and you're going to have to pay the fee for housing. They'll try to contact you.
Yeah, which is admirable. Okay, next thing, we go into resignation. To accept, I make a motion to accept the resignation of Jacob Bancroft as student worker effective February 7th, 2021. Is there a second?
Dean Michael, second.
Yeah, he was helping to run the TV station, but he's going off to college, so he won't be around. And we'll see, when he comes back, we can rehire him and continue to use his services, so it's just the easy way to handle it. Roll call. Overly, aye. Giuliano.
Aye.
Whitton.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Motion carried. Approval of warrants.
I make, I make a motion, be resolved the town board approves the February 9th, 2021, general fund warrant, vouchers number 34 through 72, totaling $42,894.97. And the February 12th, is that correct? 2021 Highway Fund Warrant Vouchers Number 19 through 38, totaling $61,742.33.
Okay, is there a second?
Giuliano, second. But it was, what was the number on the total for the second one for the highway? Did you read there?
61,742.33.
Huh, I, I have on, I have 61,714.83 on mine.
It may, it may have been updated by the end of the day, Chris.
Okay. I, I just, I just.
We'll double check, yeah.
Was the 12th date correct, Carol?
No, no.
The, the form has 12 on it, so I just.
With the February Highway Warrant, yeah.
Okay, roll call, vote. Overly, aye. Giuliano.
Aye.
Whitton.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Cunningham. Cunningham.
Aye.
Oh, okay, motion carried. Uh, we're not doing any move of funds this month. So that was easy. The supervisor's report, I sent it out to you last night. The January 2021 supervisor's report will be approved when the 2020 books are reconciled, which will be around April, May. That's when the AUD is being submitted to Albany. Any other business before the board? Any other business before the board?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kinda concerned by the email you sent out today. I think that, uh, we should have an executive session to discuss that.
I agree. I'll go with that, Dean.
So before we go into executive session, I agree with that too. Can I just say that, uh, I, I, I'd like to think about moving forward with the next meetings to have public comments. We obviously have four members of the public here tonight, and nobody's acted like a hooligan and chimed in and tried to hijack the meeting. So I, I think from here forward, we can start having public comments at our meetings.
I agree with that. Would that, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, if, if not, I, I again like to move towards having live.
In person.
Meetings in person because hardly anybody shows up to our meetings anyway. So if someone does have something to say, um, you know, we can accommodate, you know, a number of people in the, uh, in the audience.
Eighteen people is the number.
And that includes all of us, right?
No.
No?
No, we're separate.
There's eighteen X is on the floor.
Right.
So the audience, it's not on the stairs and right in front of it. So it's eighteen extra people, not including us.
Okay.
So, uh.
But one way or the other, I would go with what either Michael says, or if we can do it in person, I, I, I'd prefer to just do it in person.
So, uh, we, we have to check as to what the status of the, um, activity with Jerry is up there trying to cobble the system back together again. That's the only question I have. If it works, we can do it. You know, if he's comfortable and he can make it work, good. Primarily, the problem is with the scroller, but I don't know the interaction of some of these, uh, electronic boxes up there anymore.
Is there something that we have to look to about updating at some point, Ray?
It's ten thousand dollars for next year's budget.
Okay.
Roughly, and that's the number I've been given.
I have a feeling I'm in the minority, but I should just make my voice heard that I think these work fine and until we absolutely have to meet in person, I'm fine continuing to do these. But I'm sure I'm in the minority of that.
I mean, there is benefit. Look, Mike, I, I do agree there's benefit that kinda gives us a little bit of leeway being, uh, with Zoom. My, my only concern, at, at least long as we can get public hearing going, either way, I'm, I'm fine either way with that. But I definitely think at least people should have, uh, be able to kinda get back into.
Yeah.
Involved.
Well, part of my, and, and I forgot to bring it up, but part of my, uh, my thought process is that we should start back doing our zoning revision. I mean, it's been a year and everything's getting cold and we're gonna start forgetting where we were and you know, I, it's been fifteen years since this thing started. Um, I'd like to have it done.
What, what, what about, um, I, 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 I think at some point you made a comment or the ability to approve certain sections of it that's already been through so we can get it to public.
Well, one of the options was to, to take as we go along, get it approved instead of having this large financial burden on the town.
All at once.
It's gonna be the attorneys reviewing and, and updating the code and everything else. Uh, i- if we wait to the end and do it all as one, I mean, it's probably gonna be a hefty thirty, forty thousand dollar bill. I mean, if we can, if we can bite off as we're going, it's gonna be financially more capable of, of handling in our regular budget.
The, the only problem I see is that we've been allowing people to comment after we've gone through a session, so we haven't incorporated their comments, whether they're good or bad. I'm not making any judgment into the discussion we had, so.
We've updated sections after people have commented.
I know we did some, but I don't know how many.
All of them that I know of. I mean, I don't know, I, I, I have to review what our last session was, but for the most part, we've, we've been updating everything as we've gone along. And if there was something that was missed, someone could, you know, bring up an objection to, to something, and we've addressed it the next meeting.
Say, I, I, I just don't recall all the specifics. You are handling all the incoming stuff and.
Yeah.
I just don't know what.
I, I thought we were all. You know, anybody who has brought up, you know, questions on something and, and even after the fact, and you know, typically we allow the, the week after the meeting for, for someone to send in comment so that I can have the time of, of the last week because we're going every other week to have these, uh, Thursday, uh, night meetings. Um, but then I would have the time to put together the, uh, the changes so that everybody can review it for the next meeting.
I agree with, you know, we can do them in person because typically, as you said, it's less than a handful of people that typically would come.
Three or four people unless it's a hot topic.
And it's hard to tell what's a hot topic, so. But in general, they've been very minimal. So those can be, again, and they would be broadcast live through the TV channel.
Yep.
Not on Zoom or on YouTube. Well, I don't know if we can do YouTube too, in addition to, uh.
Well, I think.
They're not, they're not live, Ray. They're not live on YouTube, but they're posted to YouTube a day or two.
Okay, so.
Yeah, the, um, this, uh, recording is, is then digitized and then uploaded to YouTube. And I think Jerry is, is somewhat digitizing the broadcast and then setting it up for rebroadcast anyway. And then he was setting it up for our Facebook or, or, or YouTube channel.
Me too.
So that's where.
I just wanna be sure that the problem that we're involved with in the, um.
I think the scrollers are different.
Electronics doesn't interfere with the upgrading to YouTube or transmission. That's my only concern. I have no objection to doing it. It's just that we can do it successfully. That's all I'm concerned about. So, I mean, if you want, I'll, I'll ask him and see what he says.
Yep.
And, uh, send an email and away we go. And do it live.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of topics that we've been handling that really need to be updated, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and as to whether we wanna take bits and pieces as we've done, probably about half of it now. Um, if we wanna have the attorney start working on it, I mean, ultimately, there's a coordination because a lot of those things affect the, uh, the definitions. Um, so changing a code without changing the definition is, is problematic, uh, but we could start the process. Um, and then by the time we may finish the first section, we may have the, the second section done and updated the, uh, the definitions so that we could coordinate the definition section at the same time.
Now, you know that general code will review all of that stuff for free and give you comments back. They won't change it. But they'll give you their suggestions as to best practice. Maybe it's wordsmithing, maybe it's a technical point. I don't know. But it will give you a, a different view or eye of it in concert with the rest of the book because they have it all in your computer.
And so maybe, maybe what I'll do first is I'll send them the sections that we've already made changes to have them annotate it or, uh, document whatever changes they think before I send it to Shane.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so that we could save on the legal fees.
Yeah, and, and maybe get a, a better document. And I'm not saying what we didn't was not good, but get a better one.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll go forward on that. I'll talk to Jerry and, um, send an email and then you can, we'll post, uh, the start of those again.
So since I missed it, was there a party, uh, for the, uh, the approval of the ag law?
No.
Yeah, yeah. My computer decided to turn off in the middle of everything. I don't, maybe it was giving me a warning sign or something.
I mean, Jeff, Jeff was firing his gun in the air and dancing.
It was like.
Been a long process. Congratulations.
Okay, so, um, ready to adjourn?
We're gonna go to executive session?
Oh, you. Oh, that's right. It wasn't on my schedule. That's why I lost track of it. I, I'm not prepared to provide any information as I told Giuliano previously. This is from Albany and the.
Uh, uh, hold on, we're not on the executive session yet.
No, I'm just saying from Albany and I'm not gonna provide anything.
Well, I think we would wanna know why.
I'll check with Albany if they want it to be dispersed. So I'm working under their guidance.
I mean, they specifically said, don't tell your board members?
Hold on, are we gonna go in the executive meeting, talk about this?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss.
Giuliano second that.
When are we doing it?
Right now.
Oh, okay. I just trying, we didn't say when, that's.
I know, I didn't get it out of my mouth yet, but.
What is your purpose?
To discuss.
Personnel.
A personnel issue that Mr. Oberly has alerted the board to.
Thanks.
Okay, is there a second?
I have a motion and a second. Do you have a roll call, please, Ray?
Wait, I'm waiting for a second.
You have a second. Giuliano has a second.
Uh, roll call, vote. Oberly, aye. Giuliano.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now we'll go into executive session. I make a motion to return to regular order of business. Is there a second?
Dean Michael second.
Now we do roll call, vote. Oberly, aye. Giuliano.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Okay, now we adjourn the whole thing. I make a motion that the town board adjourns the meeting. Is there a second?
Dean Michael second.
Okay, roll call, vote. Oberly, aye. Giuliano.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Motion carried. Meeting is adjourned at, uh, whatever time it is, seven fifty-seven.